We now call the meeting to order. If we could please pay attention to Councilwoman Clear for the invocation, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise if you're able.
I've invited Pastor Scott Turner, who has served as a senior pastor for the last three years at North Rock Baptist Temple located at the corner of Chester and Laurenton, Oakland. They're actually my neighbors. They've been in the Oakland community for more than 17 years. They currently support 18 missionaries around the world on six continents, and their audio recordings of both Sunday morning and Sunday evening messages reach more than 61 countries around the world. North Rock Baptist Temple is proud to be one of over 4,000 satellite campuses for Faith Bible Institute and the only campus in the Topeka area. They have a lot of events and activities that you can take part in, and additional information is available on their website. Pastor Turner?
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for the opportunity we have to freely gather in this country, Father, to express ideas, Father, to improve our communities, Father, to come together. Father, I ask that you take control of this meeting tonight, Father, that the words that are said, Father, reflect the goals of Topeka as a city and the communities represented. Father, help us to keep in mind that it is the freedom that we have in you that allows us the freedom that we have in this country, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As usual, the awkward walk towards the center for the proclamations. So we have two organizations that I have very much respect for, and one of them is the group of National Night Out. If the Safe Streets Group that organizes National Night Out and PARs can all come up here so we can read this proclamation. For those of you that don't know, this is our 35th year in doing National Night Out. If I recall, a few years ago, one of our National Night Outs was a night without crime. There was nothing that happened, and it is a wonderful way for individuals and, yes, everybody, come on, this is a big thing. It's a wonderful celebration of us celebrating community, and one of the things that we are missing out sometimes in our country and in our neighborhoods and in our cities and in our states is the fact of us knowing each other as neighbors, celebrating each other as neighbors, and spending time together without a phone or a screen in our faces, right? And what National Night Out is that it provides that venue for people to actually just go and get together, and we have many partners that help us out in that endeavor, that provide food so that neighborhoods could just get together and have a meal without having to suffer the burden of the financial distress that it may cause to put that together. So it is with a lot of pride that I read this proclamation, and it says, "Whereas the National Night Out Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 11, 2018," entitled National Night Out, "and whereas it's the 35th annual National Night Out that provides a unique opportunity for Topeka and Shawnee County to join forces with other communities across the country promoting cooperative police and crime preventive measures, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Topeka and Shawnee County be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and drug violence in Topeka-Shawnee County. Therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, August 11, 2018, as National Night Out." And I will add something else to the proclamation. It says Topeka Police Department, but Fire Department is also very active. They always do a lot of events and activities to ensure that the kids and the people that go have a great time. So Kristi, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. We are on tap to be the biggest and best National Night Out we've seen so far. We currently have 84 neighborhoods throughout Shawnee County registered. Last year, we had 83 neighborhoods participate, and we're still getting more people calling in. I think we've had three people express interest today for their own individual neighborhoods. So this is amazing to us, and we couldn't do this without your support and without the support of the community behind us. So again, if you have anybody who might be interested in hosting one, we're still making that encouragement because really getting to know your neighbors is one of the best steps we can take in crime prevention and in coming together as a community. So thank you very much.
Chief, if you could say a few words of the importance that this holds for our community?
Well, it's one of the greatest events the city of Topeka can put together. It brings everybody across the city of Topeka together. It may be in different neighborhoods, but in some way, we're united all across the city, and Kristi and PARs and Safe Streets does a tremendous job of facilitating that stuff and our partnership that we have with the Fire Department. It's a great endeavor. It's just a great community night, so we enjoy it.
Well, let's celebrate this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If you guys can come up. And as many of you know, I've been very open with the fact that I have a child with severe persistent mental illness, and Valeo has been an amazing partner in that journey in our family. I have Bill Persinger's phone on speed dial, and I can tell you that the work that Valeo does in our community is invaluable. And today, we're going to do a proclamation that is really important because most minority communities have the habit of making sure that our issues stay at home, and we don't want to talk about them. And we're taught through time and time and time again that, hey, those issues stay at home and don't worry. If we give you time, that's a stage. And sometimes we live in a constant state of cognitive dissonance, of seeing something but not really being willing to accept it. So I thought that it was very special that Valeo took the time this month to highlight the fact that this is Minority Mental Health Awareness Month, so that all of the individuals in our communities understand that having a mental health condition is not something that is something for you to be ashamed of. With well care, with a community behind you, you're able to be absolutely functional in your community, and we have to break that stigma of mental health. The city of Topeka is part of the City Strives Coalition, which is a coalition established in the city of New York that talks about mental health and how we have to break that stigma, how we have to talk about this and advocate for it. So a todas mis familias que hablan español, rompan el estigma, busquen ayuda. To all of our families that speak Spanish and other languages, break the stigma and look for help. So whereas good mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas treatment to those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives, whereas there's significant disparities that place persons in the racial minority population at a greater risk for serious mental health problems, such as, for example, higher rates of suicide and reports of serious psychological distress, therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2018 as Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. If you could say a few words, Bill?
I will. Thank you, Mayor De La Isla. The support we receive from the city of Topeka, Shawnee County Commission, our state legislature, and all levels of government allows Valeo to carry on with its partners and do what we do. We help people find a place to live and jobs or recover from substance abuse and reunite families, and public mental health was designed for everybody from all walks of life, and these volunteers here and a couple of paid staff, where'd they go? They see to it that the job gets done. We enjoy at Valeo a culture of recovery and accountability and transparency. I would like to have each of the board members introduce themselves and staff members as well, so just pass the mic on.
Hi, I'm Joe Scranton. I'm the head of a smaller piece of the Valeo organization called the Community Residence Program, and we're very pleased to have this proclamation done, and we thank you, thank the mayor, and we thank the city council, of course, for the honor.
I am Henry Dairis, and I chair the Valeo Foundation Board, and just happy to be here, and thank the mayor and city council and everybody for their support.
Hello, I'm Frank Henderson, and I chair the Valeo Behavioral Healthcare Governing Board, and the mayor has expressed it so eloquently in how mental health impacts everyone, and we are there to provide services for everyone. So thank you, mayor.
I'm Pat Vega, program manager for four or five programs, and that's about it.
We've been spent two and a half years consolidating management positions to save money, and Pat doesn't know she's going to get another one tomorrow.
Well, thank you very much for the work that you guys do in our community, for the partnership with the chief of police and with our police department and our fire department so that we could all stay safe. So we just celebrate this month, and thank you for your services to our community.
It's a pleasure. Thank you. Chief Coughlin serves on both governing boards, and Amy Coughlin is our Public Relations Director. They're going to struggle a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much.
City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, I introduce Dr. Jason Peak, our Public Works Director. He has a couple of nice events, presentations to have for our community tonight. Dr. Peak?
So our first presentation, I'm going to introduce Brett Latauski. He is the Kansas Chapter Eight of American Public Works Association Awards Chairman, and he's got a few words to share with you.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much for letting me make this presentation. As you mentioned, I'm the Awards Director for the Kansas Chapter of American Public Works Association. In earlier this year, city staff, along with your consulting firm, professional engineering consultants, and the contractor, Bettis Asphalt and Construction, submitted a nomination for the Project of the Year Award for the Historical Restoration and Preservation less than $5 million. And it's my honor to be able to tell you that you won this award from the Kansas Chapter, and with that, I'd like to present the plaque to you today.
Could we get?
Can you bring them up on the stage?
Could they tell us what the project was? Yeah, could we know a little bit more about the project? Here. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this project on Southwest Clay Street between 6th and 10th was, actually, was a historic project. We actually used the existing brick that was there, recycled it. We worked with PEC, we worked with the neighborhood, we worked with Bettis Asphalt, and Robert Bidwell here, our project engineer, had the challenge of getting us all together and making sure this project got done on time. Also, with our projects, it was a street project, but we coordinated with our utilities department to replace the water line and improve drainage, and I think, you know, if you drive it, it definitely changed and enhanced the character of that neighborhood.
Thank you.
While I'm up here, could I say please pass the sales tax?
Not adequate, sir. You're an attorney, you know that. Okay, so we have another presentation, City Manager.
Yes, Dr. Peak, please continue.
So this one we are really excited about, and I'm going to let Chuck Williams within the American Public Works Association, that's a national organization of about 30,000 members, including Canada and North America. Chuck serves as the Regional Director for Region Seven, which includes Kansas, and so he's here visiting us tonight to talk about reaccreditation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is really a pleasure for me. Though I'm a Regional Director, which covers all the way up to Canada, I'm extremely familiar with the city of Topeka. As I spent 29 years of my career with the city of Manhattan, and I then kind of slipped to the dark side and went to Missouri for about five years, but then I came back to Kansas and retired from the city of Lametza. So I'm extremely familiar with the city of Topeka and their Public Works Department, and I can tell you they've always been held in high regard across the state of Kansas and within the region. So being accredited to the agency is no surprise to me. Being reaccredited is no surprise to me. Accreditation is actually a program of continuous improvement. City of Topeka acquired their accreditation initially in 2005, and every four years, they are required to go through a reaccreditation process because, again, we want to ensure continuous improvement. And one of the things that the Director Peak shared with me was since the original accreditation in 2005, really, the administrative staff of the department has turned over. The department has kind of changed. Utilities has been pulled out of it. Because they were accredited, it helped make those transitions smoother because all of the policies, all of the procedures were already in place for the new team that might have come in at any time. So in early May, evaluators from Virginia, Florida, and Kansina, Missouri came in and spent a day and a half with your staff. They reviewed over 150 best management practices. Now, that may not sound like a lot because there's almost such 100 that can be reviewed, but for reaccreditation, they come in and the evaluators only select a limited number. The agency doesn't know which one, so they have to be prepared for all of them. So Directors Jason Peak and Bob Sample, and Reaccreditation Managers Brenda Hayes and Brendan Bayless, and all of the staff are to be commended for all of their efforts because when the evaluators left, they left here with a very, very high regard for this department. And I don't always hear that. I mean, I always hear positive things about public works departments, but they were especially impressed with the city of Topeka. And so you, as a governing body and as a community, should be extremely proud of what this department's doing. So it's with great deal of pleasure on behalf of the Board of Directors for the American Public Works Association that I present to you and the department their reaccreditation for four more years.
First of all, I'd like to have all our staff that are here tonight from Public Works and Utilities stand. I mean, I can't tell you within our professional association what a mark of excellence. Chuck didn't mention it, but there are less than 150 agencies between, in all of North America, that have achieved accreditation, and we're probably one of the few that has been successfully reaccredited three times. So it is a true mark of excellence for this staff and what they continue to do through all the changes in leadership that we had, policies, procedures to hang on, and so just very proud to represent them up here, but the credit goes to them, so thank you.
Mark of a true leader, Dr. Peak. You give credit to your team. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are done with presentations, and we now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Dia?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
We now proceed with appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Michael Snowden to the Jayhawk Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council for a term ending July 18, 2021. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Riquette Kane to the Topeka Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill an unexpired term and full term expiring on January 1, 2023.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any other comments? Seeing no comments, we proceed with the voting. The mayor does not vote.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. I would love to introduce Ms. Riquette Kane, if she could please stand up so that she could be recognized. She is one of the residents in THA, and she is now representing here on the board, and I can tell you that I have been in several meetings, and she has been in all of them, and it's been a delight to see her at work, so thank you for stepping up and serving your community. We now move on to the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the Downtown Fight Festival. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Woodward striking an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise provisions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear approving a special event known as the Classic Movie Nights in Nado and rescinding Resolution Number 8976. D are minutes of the regular meeting of July 10, 2018, and there are no applications.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Lesser approves. Councilman Emerson seconds. Any comments and changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to action items. If the clerk would read item A.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trapp concerning International Property Maintenance Code local amendments regarding notice and procedural matters, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 860-70, 860-80, and 861-10, and repealing original sections.
City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. City council members, tonight, the city will consider the changes to the IPMC. We brought these changes before you on June 19, the city council meeting. At that meeting, some questions regarding the ordinance changes were made, and action was made to defer the item to the July 17 meeting tonight. Staff has reviewed a number of the items from Councilwoman Hiller's concerns and the others from the governing body. Staff distributed those responses to the governing body on Monday morning. Today, I met with Councilwoman Hiller for about an hour to discuss some of that information in more in depth, and at this time, for the good of the public, I'm going to frame the discussion for tonight and ask Mary if you need to. Please come forward and review the memorandum that she presented to you. Mary?
Councilwoman Hiller distributed those questions last month, and I responded to them and shared the responses with you. And today, I received from Councilwoman Hiller two documents with red boxes of more changes and questions. Essentially, she disagrees with things like combining, she believes that the ordinance should be one ordinance as opposed to two. She takes issue with certain of my interpretations of state law, city ordinance, using shall versus may, and just a variety of different comments and concerns, and I don't know whether that was shared with you, but tonight, I would ask that you approve the amendments. I don't feel that any of Councilwoman Hiller's comments are helpful or relevant, and I would ask that you pass the ordinances as presented to you tonight. Questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I have some questions. Do we need to make a motion to discuss this?
Actually, if we are going to, we could talk to staff, I think, before making a motion, so we could, if we have any questions for staff right now, we can ask, unless the body would like to make a motion and then enter into discussion inside of that motion.
Your honor, if we can ask questions, I'll do that, but I just wanted to make sure I'm in order.
Absolutely.
Do I have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mary, I was kind of disappointed that I got this on Monday morning, because I work all day, and then I have an NIA meeting, so I don't get home till like 8:30, quarter to 9:00. And then today, you know, I was in court most of the day, so I was kind of surprised that I got this on Monday. And I do have some questions. My first question is, what is the urgency of this, of passing this right away?
It's just something that the code staff and myself have worked on for the last 18 months.
Okay.
I suppose there's no hurry or expediency.
So there's not really an urgency, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And I understand working on things for a long period of time, but that's just what we do. That's what you guys do. As a council rep, I want to make sure that I understand this totally, and if I'm reading this right, your memo, it talks about a volunteer tree that staff would have to provide. This takes it out, right? Is that correct?
These amendments don't even address volunteer trees.
Okay. Okay, so weeds should be defined as all grasses?
But the current code provision is, which has been in the code for the last four years, you want to know what the definition of weeds is?
Because this is saying provides the following weeds, all premises and exterior property. So does this take weeds out, or does it leave it in?
No, the amendments don't even deal with weeds, so the current provision just says that you can't have weeds greater than 12 inches in height.
Okay, so tell me what the current amendment, because I'm trying to read all this and trying to merge it all in in a quick timeframe, so tell me what this does.
There is no amendment at all. We're not proposing any change to what the code is.
City Manager?
Thank you, mayor. Councilwoman Ortiz, I'm sorry. We did not intend to confuse the issues here. That was an additional item that had been brought up with regards to something that was discussed with Councilwoman Hiller and I, and I felt that it was important to provide a response. So that is not an item that is part of this discussion. The main focus is the changes regarding notices and that information.
Okay, so then that would be my next list, so I'm going to stick weeds to the side. I'm confused now on weeds.
That would be another day, ma'am. Sorry.
Yeah, and see, that's what happens. That's what happens. I understand that. Okay, so can I talk about notification?
Sure.
Okay, and I'm reading this from Mr. Henderson's email. Certified mail will be used for the majority of cases. Isn't it a state statute that we have to use certified mail?
No, we have the option of certified mail or personal service.
Okay, and what's, how do you define personal service for abatement?
We're defining personal service according to the rules of civil procedure that are used in state law. Personal service encompasses an array.
It does.
Actually, serving someone.
It does, mail.
Going to their home and leaving it with someone.
Attacking, personal service, sheriff. I understand all that.
Right.
But what is, but this kind of disturbed me when it says certified mail would be used for the majority of cases, however, when the abatement needs to occur quickly, staff will personally serve the property owner?
Yes, in situations where the landlord dumps stuff on the tenant's property on the yard, we don't want to wait 10 days. We would like him to abate it immediately, so most likely, staff would personally serve the property owner and give them a couple of days to clean it up.
Okay, it concerns me because we're short-staffed. Is that correct, on code officers?
That I don't, I don't know.
Because I was told, that's what I was told, so now we're going to have them serving. I think that's another issue with me, if we're short-staffed.
We just want that option to be able to personally serve someone. The majority of service will be by certified mail, but in certain situations, service, personal service would be very helpful.
Okay, so the homeowner, that's, you're going to go to that residence and serve it?
The property owner.
The property owner?
But in many cases, the property owner is an entity.
It's going to be the residence, right? Or the renter?
No, it'll be the property owner, who may, who, so it won't be the renter, the tenant.
Okay, so most of these, most of these... Okay. So, most of these issues or situations happen on a rental property, correct? Well, I would say, I would say that. Let's use that. Let's use that.
Let's assume that, yes.
How are you going to get the property owner? Are you going to go to the home, that rental property? If we don't, I mean, I guess what I'm looking at is, we have rental properties that we can't even find the homeowners, or we have properties that don't have the homeowners.
Currently, now, we have the ability to personally serve the property owner. All we're doing in this amendment is fleshing it out by defining exactly what personal service is. We're trying to give staff some direction, because they come to the legal department and say, how do I personally serve somebody?
Yeah, yeah. I get that, Mary. I get that. I just, it just kind of, I just want to make sure that we legally get it right, that we legally do it right. And I tell you what, I've been on the council long enough. The first three years, I rode with code, and some of the things that was happening, I could not believe. And when was the last time, or maybe this might not be a question for you, that somebody, city manager, has gone through and gone with code to make sure that there is a procedure? Because this is kind of sounding like, you know, there isn't a procedure. They don't know. I rode with code, and they were just taking subpoenas and laying them on a judge's desk. There is a judge over there, they have a judge on call once a week, and we can get those turned around quickly. And they, what they were doing was laying them over there, and this judge was in court all week. And it should, you know, anytime we have subpoenas served, it should go to the judge that's on call, that he could sign off on it immediately. So, that's my problem with this, is I'm wondering, is it procedure, or is it a policy change that really needs to be done, or is it just procedure that needs to be changed?
Well, things have changed since you initially rode with code. When we've had the IPMC since 20, we've had it for four years. So, I think things have changed from when you initially rode with code.
They have changed. So, I would say that we're now, at my request, we're now cross-training, because we didn't have that back then. You know, we had a nuisance guy and a maintenance, and a property maintenance guy. Two people went out for one resident.
Yeah, things have changed a lot. And you're talking about not subpoenas, but administrative warrants, where we have to go to the district court.
Right, right.
And we just have to, I mean, it's a judge over across the street, and we have to accommodate our schedules to fit that.
That's not what I was told, Mary. I talked to Chief Parish, and she said, we have a judge on call.
Right.
I went over there and personally said, you are holding up our warrants. And she said, no, they are bringing them and leaving them. They should be making a call. We come out of the court, at least in the morning, in the afternoon, in the lunch break. As long as I know that they're there, we'll sign them. And one person is on call. And that's why I'm saying, is it a procedure? Is it something procedure that they don't know about, or they're just not doing? I don't know that.
And that process that you're talking about is not even addressed in these procedures. That's a whole different issue. And frankly, I don't know how administrative warrants are handled now. All I know is you have to go over to the district court and get it. But if you want clarification on that, then Sasha Hahn can contact you and explain exactly how the administrative warrant works. But that's not in here tonight.
And I'm concerned, because that, and I'm concerned with e-filing that we have, that is, you know, we can just, now we're e-filing things, and we're getting things back quicker, you know? And I'm assuming that'll turn over with the warrants as well. I'm just saying, in probate court and different courts, we're doing a lot of e-file, which is mandatory. And so, I'm assuming we've done our subpoenas with that, and it's a quicker turnaround. It really is. It's a quicker process. So, anyway, I have some, I'm just not clear on this, as clear as I'd want to be. But, and I had another thing, I'll find it, but I'll come back. Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Additional questions for staff? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Mary, a couple times, we've talked back and forth about some of the timing issues don't necessarily work out with mandatory requirements to notify a tenant that you have to get on their property. I've read through a bunch of this, but I didn't, and I don't know if we had a problem with that before. There's been some concerns from the public. Has that been addressed in this?
Are you talking about evictions of tenants?
Well, no, you know, if, so if a property owner is served with an issue that they need to go abate on the property, they're required to notify the tenant that they're coming on the property for a certain period of time, and there was an overlap where they didn't give the tenant a notice that they were getting on their property, but we require them to do it before that notice was up.
That may be because they had, there's a lease provision that requires the property owner to notify the tenant before the property owner can come on the property.
It could be.
It probably is a condition of the lease, which, no, we don't address that in here as well. That's-
So, we're still putting people in a legal quandary?
Well, not, I mean, we're not putting them in a legal quandary. I mean, they have a legal document that addresses issues between the landlord and the tenant. So, that's completely separate from what we do.
Well, that's true. But if, if we're requiring a landlord to go clean something up, and he's obligated by contract with his tenant to provide a certain amount of time of notice, then he's in a legal quandary, because he's going to violate one contract or the other.
Well, we give the property owner generally about 10 days to abate.
Well, right. But if he has to require, if he's required by the lease to notify somebody that has 14 days, how does that work?
Well, I don't know, because I don't, I don't know all of the lease provisions.
City Manager.
In those particular cases, Councilman Jensen, we would be able to work with them relative to the notice. I mean, if they contacted the inspector and letting them know that there were issues related to that, we work with individuals regarding extensions and so forth, when there are circumstances that warrant it.
Okay. And that's good enough for me. I just, the last thing I want to do is to put someone in a bad spot, because they have a lease that says what they're going to-
Understood.
But at the same time, I certainly want to wait 30 days to compel somebody to go clean something up. So, there's a delicate balance there.
True.
If that's, if you're comfortable with it, then that's good enough for me.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Additional questions for staff? And if not so, does anybody have a motion? Councilwoman Heller.
I have some comments and early questions for staff at this point, but my name got brought up. So, I think I need to speak out. As I said, back in June, we got this, and it was pretty complex. Fundamentally, in terms of what the staff, I'm sorry, in terms of what the staff has put forth as the reason for this, these changes, it's to be able to expedite service, really, have more options that are within the Kansas statutes, and be able to get folks served. And I applaud the staff for doing that. I, Mary has done a good job of documenting the backup for that. So, I want to see those provisions go through. A month ago, what I said was that I had some concerns. I had some questions. Some of them, I had put on a list at the last minute. I'd been talking to the city manager for two weeks about it, hadn't been able to, I had questions so that I could put together a list of concerns or suggestions. At that point, we talked about it at council, and there was an agreement to put it off for a month, and not to put it in the committee, but to put it off for a month, quote, for staff to work on it. I assumed, because it's the norm, that people had heard that I had more than that list. I was not contacted at all about follow-up. I continued to work the best that I could on the different things that were of concern to me. At about two weeks, I checked with the city manager, and he said that he had given the staff a deadline to turn in the answers to the starter list of questions, a deadline of Thursday, a couple of days ago, three days before the council meeting, to turn those responses in to him. He did not offer at that point that there would be any engagement. I thought, well, fine, if they need that much time just to answer the questions, okay. And that's the answers that we got on Monday morning. I do have questions. When the presentation was made to staff, and I think it's, or to us, I think it's awesome that people have been work on, working on this that long. But there were more questions that I had. We, as council members, have not only the right, but the responsibility to look at these things. Some of us deal with code stuff every day. I've gotten up background in how that worked in the prior codes, as well as what has worked or not worked here that I really wanted to look at. I felt obligated to do that. So, I didn't get any answers or any contact till the same time that you did. I had continued working on stuff. I brought it to the city manager this morning, because it didn't seem clear how concerned I was. To have it shared with staff and then written off is really almost unbelievable. I certainly could have been ready, I think, by today, but I'm not. I didn't bring anything prepared for you, because there are too many things to give you at the last minute. And you all have the right to see the questions. For me, I don't think it's appropriate to take your time until I've done my due diligence and met with staff to ask the questions that I had. That has not occurred yet, and I regret that. But it was, it was out of my control, as far as I understood, and I was willing to work with the city manager and whatever he and his staff needed. So, I would respectfully, regretfully, but respectfully, ask that some time be allowed for those questions to be reviewed by me with staff, as I should. And then, if it turns out that there are some things that I would want to share with you as a colleague, and it's my job to do that, that I have the time and support to do that. Because it is already the 17th, staff had three and a half weeks. I don't think it'll take me that long. But also, if we have things to share back, the council deserves to have that, two weeks before they're considered, if it's major at all. And I don't know what I'm going to end up with. So, unfortunately, probably asking to have this deferred until the 21st. I think it can be done. I don't think this needs to go in committee. There's been conversation about going ahead and addressing the code overall, because a lot of questions about various sections keep coming up. But if people want to put this in committee, that's fine. I think just some more time, without taking much of your time, or of staff's time, it's going to be ready to go.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Madam Mayor, I would like to see us do this as a non-action and not a committee, that we could do it with the public and discuss it, maybe get all the concerns or all the questions, and then look at it and go back to staff and maybe get it on the books, so we can openly talk about it. I know sometimes when it's in committee, you know, some people don't, aren't able to come, or, you know. I think that's how important it is. I deal a lot with code. Matter of fact, the same ride Karen gave you, get your seatbelt on, because I'm going to have to take you on a ride, too, to show you how much, I got weed streets. That's what I call them, weed streets. And, you know, it's terrible out there, and I get those calls all the time. You know, we can't even walk down the sidewalk, because there's weeds, you know, coming out. And now that we've taken away the makeover, takeover, or takeover, makeover, or clothe your curb, or whatever they've called it, I've got all kind of couches. I've got all kind of stuff out there. That's because I have constituents that throw things out there that they can't afford to take away to the dump. But I'm not going to blame it all on my constituents, because I have, and I get those calls to remove this. I had a big screen TV at Fourth and Lafayette called city manager, can we get, can we get the crews out there? Took two days for us to get. People are just dumping, because they can't get rid of it. When we take those programs away that are so vital, when we start them, that's what they look forward to. But when we take them away, they're all over the place. But weeds is very, very, very bad. I got rolled up for a bush that was weeds. It was my bush that got overgrown, but I had to cut it down. That's just the way it is. We've got to find a mediocre, but I am concerned, I'm concerned now how we handle things. We send a letter the first time, and the second time, you don't get a letter. You just get a violation. I get that complaint all the time. I think Mr. Henderson, he's over there shaking, you get it. You know, because people want to do right, but sometimes, you know, I get, I don't always get my mail, or, you know, I get that. It gets mixed up. And then I got the complaint that they've gone out there and they've cut it. I just wanted to make sure, if you want my support, I want to make sure that I'm doing everything and giving them the tools that they need. And I'm not so sure that this is the tools that they need. And I want to make sure with state law that we are covered in doing everything to notify them that we can. And so, I would like to see it on our agenda somewhere. But that's me. If not, I'd like to see it go to committee. And I think we cut out the committee as a whole. Am I correct?
Deputy Mayor?
Ms. Robinson, so if I was to make a motion to defer this for six weeks, would I need to do something special to have it deferred as a non-action item, or just, or do I just defer it, and then it gets on the agenda wherever it fits?
I believe you could defer it as a non-action item.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I don't know if we have to do that. He sets it. He sets the agenda.
Well, then that's correct, but-
I'm just asking if that's what you guys would like to do to support it. So, we get all the answers, and we're all on one accord.
Order, Councilwoman Ortiz has the floor. Who, you were next. Deputy Mayor?
Quite finished. But my only point in that was that Councilwoman Heller had asked that it be deferred as, or brought back as a discussion item, so that everybody has the chance to do their due diligence, as you two clearly have indicated you'd like to do, and I fully support. But there's the opportunity for that to be brought back and discussed, that the public would have time to mull over for a couple of weeks, as is our, you know, normal protocol, and then we would vote on it. So, I would make the motion that it be brought back in six weeks as a discussion item, just to give you all the time to do what you would like to do, and then put it back into the normal process with your comments.
We have a motion to defer this item for six weeks, and to be brought back as a discussion item, and we have a second by Councilmember Lesser. Oh, pardon me. So, we have a motion at this point in time. Do we have a second for this motion? Councilwoman Heller is making a second for the motion. Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No disrespect to anyone, and it partially could be because I'm new, but I have no idea what the hell we're even talking about here, as far as it jumping around all over the place. And if I don't, I don't know how anybody out there or at home understands it either. I think the first thing we need, from what I've heard, we need to clarify is, we need to decide which way are we going? Are we trying, is the intent of pushing this back to have, as Councilman Ortiz talked about, public input and having those involved? Is the point to have Mary go back and rework this again, so we have different answers when we come back? Or is the intent to have the questions and the information that Karen received this morning to be, to be given to the entire council, so then we can make a decision? Because right now, we're all over the place, and I don't know where we're at, quite frankly. That being said, fundamentally, there are some things that I think that are important here that do need discussion. At the same time, I think Mary's done a good job in the task that she was asked to do. She was not asked to have a public hearing. She was not asked to have people come give her input in what the community thought. She was asked to evaluate it with her skills and her experience and the blah, and do it, and that's what she did. So, that being the case, I think we need to clarify what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And the one thing, though, that I will say, as a fairly new member of the council, the one thing, and this has nothing to do with Mary, but the one thing that I've seen consistently just in the six months that I've been here, that is starting to become a pattern that I don't like, is getting the information this late. You know, if there was a month between the questions being asked, to prepare them, to answer them, to do that, then it's not rational for us, who most of us have other jobs, other responsibilities, to be given it the day before, and then be expected to understand it, investigate it, vet it, all those different things. There is another issue that Councilwoman Mays and I had the same issue on. I can't remember what it was up, where it had this information. So, there needs to be a concerted effort on staff to get information to us in a timely manner, so we have the time to evaluate it. You know, I make a living in another job. This responsibility I take very seriously. I vet all these things, so I understand and can do the community the best job that I can do, but I can't do it in 24 hours sometime. And that's the only thing I want out of this, is at least we take a look at that and try to be hard in providing us information, so we can make timely- to be hardening in providing us information so we can make timely decisions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So my, my reason for deferring this is simply there are council folks that have expressed their desire to go back and look through and have more time. And given that this is not something that's, you know, super critical, that has to be done, I think we're, we should give them the time that they've asked for to go through this. I've read your comments and ideas, Mary, and I'm fairly comfortable with them. This, the reason I said six weeks is that also gives the Topeka Landlord Association a chance to look through it as well. They meet month to month, and I know they've expressed some concerns, at least of me, about how some of these notices would change. After they've had a chance to look through, they might haven't heard that there were any serious concerns with them. You know, most of them, they're all in the business of having their properties as well, so. But my only point in deferring this was that folks have expressed interest in having more time. Given that we're not on a time schedule to do this, I don't see why that would be an issue.
Councilwoman McClure?
I have a couple of questions. Wasn't this brought up a few months ago that we were going to discuss this?
City Manager?
Wasn't it months that we were looking at changing this?
I don't recall exactly when the notice may have been given to the governing body, but we had it on the, the June 19th agenda, and it would have been two weeks prior to that in the preliminary agenda that you would have been aware, made aware of it.
Yeah, because I knew this was coming a long time ago when we talked about that we had to switch over. And to Councilmember Lesser's concern, we have discussed, since I've been on the council, we had that same issue, and so it was discuss one week, vote the next week, correct? Because we were, we used to be given here and then vote. So my only statement, I guess, is we knew this was coming a long time ago, and why now all of a sudden we don't have time, I don't know. But, and I, and I understand they need more time, and that's fine with me. But I think we need to start holding ourselves accountable when we know something's going to be coming up, that we get on it then and not wait until a week before. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick comment. Looking at the calendar, I apparently cannot add, and six weeks away would be the fourth Tuesday of the month, so I would augment my motion for the 4th of September, which would be seven weeks.
Does this person that made the second agree? Okay, so Councilwoman Hiller agrees to the motion, so it is going to be seven weeks when we are going to reevaluate, take a look at all of the comments that have been presented by members of the governing body, discuss again in a public setting the IPMC ordinance that we're looking at so that then we could just go ahead and move forward with the process. So I hope that that added clarity to the question that you had with regards to what we're doing in seven weeks. Do we have additional comments, or are we ready to proceed with the vote? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I just want to clarify, you know, because I, and I'm only saying this because Lesser, number nine, threw this out there, but Mary, you don't need to go back and change anything or re, let, let us figure out what this is, and, and you know that, though, but I just, for number nine, I threw that out there for him.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second for a seven-week deferral of this item to be brought back to the council as a discussion item for us to just go through. Do, I think that, I see no more comments. We proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes, Mr. PD voting no.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item B. If the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, many Topeka Municipal Code 8.6100, adding a new section number TMZ 8.6085, and creating a new chapter 8.75 of the Topeka Municipal Code concerning unsafe structures.
City Manager?
Mayor, given the change that was made in the item A, then we would request then the same date for item B for consideration.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. We have a second by the Deputy Mayor. Given the prior discussion, I would venture to say we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed with item C, Resolutions of the Sales, City Retail Sales Tax Extension.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout to submit to the qualified electors of the City of Topeka, Kansas, the proposition of levying an additional special purpose, special purpose, retailer sales tax, so five tenths of 1%, 0.5% to the City of Topeka for the purpose of paying for certain improvements in the city pursuant to KSA 12-187 et cetera as amended.
City Manager?
Mayor, governing body, the renewal of sales tax is obviously vital to the improvement of our street infrastructure in Topeka. We have needs that could be best be met by the three-quarters cent, and that's why I discussed that in the past. We discussed that proposal, three-quarters cents, many times in the last few months to determine if it would be the preferred option. The input from, after those presentations and with governing body members has not been necessarily supportive of that type of an increase in tax. It has been identified that additional money would allow us to get to the pavement condition index of 60 goals sooner than the renewal of the half-cent. But obviously, there seems to be reluctance that identified to move that forward based on the comments and the polling data that we looked at. The proposal, therefore, before you tonight is to renew the half-cent sales tax as we have it today in order to ensure the city continues to make progress in fixing our streets. The current three-year process of designing our street in year one, purchasing the right-ofway, completing utility improvements in year two, and beginning construction in year threes, year three is proving to be a solid method and showing many benefits to our program. The projects we are seeing good bids, under near engineering estimates, the projects are staying on schedule with minimal surprises that are resulting in major change orders. Staff is working on improvements to our process of daily maintenance in the streets. Staff is also programming work to help maintain our roads, such as the crack ceiling and the micro-surfacing that we're about to see begin this week, that will help to improve and keep our good and fair roads in good condition for a longer period of time. The ballot language as a resolution as is proposed is the same language as we currently operate. In other words, addressing existing streets. We have looked at some issues related to that, in that we can take a current gravel street and improve it, do an overlay over it under the current language. The other comment, the last comment I would have, is that if we had wanted to look at expanding the ability to do work, such as looking at drainage issues, sidewalk, curb and gutter, and those types of things with our sales tax, we probably really need to be considering the three-quarters cent. That's why we went ahead and looked at doing the language that we currently have. So with that, staff, prepared for any questions you may have.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so with the half-cent sales tax that we're proposing, the word existing will still be in there, is that correct?
Correct.
So it'll be the same language, so we'll get the same thing that we got before, right?
Correct.
And, and I understand that because I did ask and clarify it a few years later, or before, if I have a dirt road, does that, does that qualify as a road? And they said, yes, because I do have some dirt roads in my, in my district. And what I'm hearing from my constituents, and I probably won't support it, is with that word existing, and I know we want more money to do curbs and gutters, and I, and I get that, it's going to cost more, but at the same time, I'm paying for something that I don't get. I don't get it. So I will not support that. I, with that word in there, we've got to do something about that. So you have people in my district, I don't know about Mr. Henderson's district over there, but he's got some, that we are paying for something that we're not going to get. So I want you to put on them shoes, put on his shoes, they're probably bigger, but put on them shoes and think about that. I, it, I haven't heard from my constituents that they don't want, they don't mind it to extend it, but why if we're not going to get anything more from it? We had to find the money to do the, to do the curbs and gutters on 21st between Golden and Whittingburn Road, and we barely found the money, but I, Colson came through and found it. But, so I want you to put yourself in, in my shoes. If you guys got curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, you been to Ripley, was it, did you go over the curb? I'm just saying. We are paying for something that we're not getting, so I won't support it as long as we have that word existing. We've got to do something about it. And I was told, well, we're going to take other measures. If that's the measure, we're going to go higher to get that. I, I, I don't agree with that. Thank you.
I also agree, and I know in the past, that word has stopped us here at the council from doing something because it said existing, and I thought we had talked about changing it from existing. So I'm, I'm with Councilmember Ortiz. I won't support it with the word existing.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. When do we change what we call this thing? The half-cent citywide is not a good name because it's too easily confused with the half-cent countywide. So we need to change the name of what we call this thing to more accurately reflect what it's going to do. This is an infrastructure projects fund, or a streets tax, or a sidewalk tag. You know, we've got to come up with something besides the half-cent sales tax because that doesn't really accurately represent what it does. It, it doesn't explain what we're using it for, and it's very, very easily confused with the existing countywide. So...
Existing?
Yeah, the existing countywide half-cent sales tax. You're doing that to me again. I'm second guessing myself. Yes, so, uh, it, it, I don't know if this is the correct place to do that. If so, I would move to change the language describing it, but again, I don't know where that, if that's codified in code or how that would work.
See, the City Manager, he just said, say no, Deputy Mayor.
Right. The, the focus on the ballot, it does not say that. It simply says the wording as to what the language, what we're authorized to do. We call it the city ha, citywide.
Citywide, okay, so we would need to change the title of the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we call it, but we can change the, the language as to what we label it. It's something that is, I believe, available.
Does that need to be done in the ordinance?
Yeah, I don't see that enlisted in the ordinance.
If it doesn't, that's fine. I mean, I, I just want to make sure when we actually get out there and describe this thing...
Yeah, we can rebrand that.
We, we do have, it seems like we're starting to have body discussions with regards to whether we're going to support it or not, and it has been a tradition for us to listen to our constituents before we start making our announcements and our decisions. So if the body is amenable to this, I'm going to ask the public comments section to, to begin. That way, we can hear from our constituents. Councilman Lesser, yes?
The only question I have is, is would it, at which point would it be prudent if, if an amendment is going to be offered on this? Would it be offered prior to public comment or after?
After.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So the first person who signed up for public comment is Mr. Gary Yeager.
Madam Mayor, members of the governing body, Mr. Trout, please staff. My name is Gary Yeager. I'm president of Vision Bank, also the chair-elect for the Chamber of Commerce, Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce. So thanks for your time. I'm here to express support for the half-cent sales tax. In 2009, this governing body and the city voters voted to do the quarters, or the half-cent sales tax because of our roads were in such bad shape. There's been hundreds of projects, millions of dollars, that have gone to the improvement of our, of our roads. We have a lot more work to do. Investing with Mr. Trout and the staff, there, there are some new processes, there's some new C-MET, there's some new maintenance that can, with the, with the continuance of the half-cent sales tax, the city and their staff can do a lot better job than they have the last two years. So being a business owner and having struggles with quality of the people that, not quality of people, but the people that, that we interview for our employment, we struggle to get anybody to even apply for our jobs. And that goes back to quality of place and quality of life. And quality of place is having good streets, and that's why it's imperative that we pass at least the half-cent sales tax. We, my colleagues and I have visited, nobody likes to pay taxes, but yet we all feel that this half-cent sales tax is really needed. The city is on the cusp of doing great things, and our quality of life and quality of place is about to get so much better. And with that, our workforce will get that much better, and our city will get much better. So once can I express support for the half-cent sales tax? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Yeager. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Terry Neer. I don't see Mr. Neer in the audience. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
I come in with a few different hats. One of them is working with Parks and Rec on the Parks and Rec Advisory Council. Another one is being co-chair of Quality of Place with Momentum 2022. And I do support the half-cent extension with some caveats. I did not support the three-quarters. You, you saw me speak about that and talk about that. I thought it was too high. One of the things I'm looking for is productivity, and that was just spoken of by this gentleman here, the, the chair. I believe that we've got to look at more productivity issues as we move forward with public works. And we've talked about that, and I think we're going to continue to talk about that. But one of the things that I'm interested in doing is also fixing other problems of quality of life in this community, and that includes Parks and Rec. And so I saw an opportunity to advance an idea, which I have given you, and I'm going to go ahead and make sure you have copies of it, again, for the record. And it is a idea that I received a lot of compliments for because it was creative. It was an idea that really doesn't raise taxes on the citizens of Topeka. And by the way, 38%, and I've checked these statistics, 38% of the sales taxes paid for by county residents that live outside the city limits. And the reason for that is that the city is a place of commerce, that's, and that's historic. That's just the way cities are set up. So around 90% of the sales taxes countywide are paid in the city by not just city residents, but out of county residents, and then, or out of city residents in the county, and then a few out of county residents, but most of it is a city and county residence. Parks and Rec is definitely a county operation, and it is a quality of place and quality of life issue. One of the statistics that was shared with our committee today from Parks and Rec was that there's 87% support for more funding for Parks and Rec countywide. That 94% of the people polled in the last year used Parks and Rec. So it is, it is a phenomenally well-used entity. Five million people a year use Parks and Rec. So some of the things I heard, a little bit of concern, was that we don't have enough time to really talk about this with the county if we were to consider it. So I'm going to put into the record a letter that says the ballot question issue is due by August 24th of this year. I'm also going to hand out copies of, it's the cover page, and then the second exhibit attached to it shows all the counties, all the city streets that the county got out of this last sales tax. The county got two of the projects, and you can see that on Exhibit A. The city got eight projects on Exhibit A of this 2014 sales tax. This is the interlocal agreement. I've heard concerns, I guess I'd call them trust issues, between city and county, and it was mostly from some city people saying we, we have some trust issues. And one of the points was raised that their attorney on the county side zealously represented the, the county in, in the last interlocal agreement, which it seemed like you did pretty well with. And I said, well, he's just doing his job. That's what attorneys do, so get...
Mr. Ledbetter, would you like more time?
I would. I'm, I'm really not trying to belabor this, but there's some things that I really would like to get on the record before... to get on the record before we make this decision.
How much time would you need, sir?
I think I'll wrap it up in three minutes, if that's acceptable.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Ortiz to extend his time. We have him seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, or please proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
You may proceed, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you very much. So on that issue of zealous representation, I mean, the city can hire zealous representatives too. That's not a problem. I think what we've got to do as a city and county is realize that our interests are intertwined. And this quality of life issue is a big issue. You just heard a concern from an employer about quality of life issues. It's not just roads. It is absolutely our parks and rec, parks that have no playground equipment anymore, vast number of buildings that need HVAC systems, bike trails that are broken from when they were built 25 years ago by the city. And so, you know, one of the questions might be, "Well, how did we get here?" Well, I'll tell you how we can get out of it, is look at this proposal reasonably and say, "Can we have a discussion over the next two weeks with the leadership of this government and the county government, and at least have a discussion about, can this work? Is this possible?" I'm telling you, with the numbers of the support for Parks and Rec, I don't see a problem with any kind of issue passing with that. I will tell you that to miss opportunities is really bad. Because we are going to have to have property tax money to fix the Parks and Rec problem. And right now, they need about $1.6 million a year just in ongoing maintenance. And of course, this proposal would take care of that. So that's a mill. That's something that everybody in this county is going to get to pay. City, county, everybody. Because it's got to get fixed. When, one of the things that I was asked was, "Why did it take so long to come up with this idea?" I said, "Well, I had to think through the whole process. I had to look at budgets. I had to make sure it wasn't an issue of organizational problems. I had to make sure it wasn't leadership problems. I needed to know that it was money problems." And that's what it is. It's a lack of maintenance funds. So what I'm asking tonight is, as I said, I support the half-cent sales tax for roads, but what I'm asking is that you would look at this proposal to talk to the county about doing a countywide half-cent and working out an interlocal agreement so that you get all the money you're supposed to get for road repairs, and that the county could conceivably get as much as $3 million a year from countywide taxes to help pay for improvements, playground equipment, maintenance, deferred maintenance, which is about $20 million right now, in Parks and Rec. That Parks and Rec system affects every district in this city. It affects all the neighborhoods. And the problem's not going to go away. That's why I proposed this, and I would ask your consideration to at least talk about it with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Next person signed up to speak is Teri Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Teri Roberts, and I am the vice chair of the Shawnee County Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And I'm here to speak after Joe, by choice. I wanted to share that we had a discussion in May, and then again in June and July about this. We had uncertain, the idea was presented. We had uncertainty about your three-quarter versus half-cent, and we didn't in any way want to take you down a path to not prevail. We think that if you give this two weeks, an opportunity to discuss it with the county commission, and we were in front of the county commission yesterday morning, telling them us about our idea, asking not for their opinion, just to consider it, I feel like we got a fairly decent, positive response, either in smiles or comments. And we think it could be worked out. There was a comment, I'm going to tell you, it was an honest comment. They said, "Well, the last time this happened, it took us over a year to get an interlocal agreement." And I said, "Well, you've got four weeks." So I hope you can all be statesmen about it, at least have consideration for it. Again, we know that it's, we are late to the dance. I told Joe, I said, "I'm going to say that. We're late to the dance. We understand that." But we really think this opportunity is win-win. We think that it might even boost your chances of getting more support because Parks and Recs are a quality of life issue. And it is undisputed in any reports that you read, and that our community sees the Parks and Rec. And I have to tell you that I've been in front of the county commission pleading for additional money for deferred maintenance, for just staffing and maintenance, and it's been a real challenge. So we think this is an opportunity. We think it's an opportunity that all citizens of Topeka would want to consider on the ballot. And I would ask for your careful consideration for some additional time to send your leaders to go talk to the county leaders, to have the discussion, to see if there is a viable alternative for a modified ballot initiative. So I want to thank you for your time and listening to me, and appreciate, I do appreciate my appointment. Richard Harmon appointed me, and Mike Lesser has asked that I be reappointed. I feel very committed to Topeka, and I'm very excited to be able to serve. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Teresa Miller.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm glad to hear people talking about their side of the town, getting their, wanting to get their roads fixed that got kind of left out of the tax money last time. I know I have a couple of roads by McKinley Park that are thin-layer asphalt, and underneath them is dirt, and they're becoming dirt roads. I also have one that's called, Norris Runs into Lorient, that is heavily traveled by the railroad and another private business back there that floods with a little bit of rain, and it has no drainage, so it's a big mess. But what I'm coming up here for tonight is, I'm not going to take too much more of your time, is that I just want to tell you, I stand behind Joe and Teri of what they're trying to do. You know I wouldn't put my name on anything if I didn't believe in it. So we do have till August 24th to look this over, get a survey out there, see how the people like that, get to the county, and I hope you keep an open mind. But I really do stand behind this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sidney Stone.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Sidney Stone. I want to share my opinion on the funding, the maintenance and repairs needed for our Parks and Rec in our capital city, that we, of course, all love and use. I'm a Topeka native, and I graduated from Washburn University School of Business. I'm passionate about everything happening in my hometown, and we, and how we are moving forward with efforts from Forge and Momentum 22, or 2022. I absolutely support the half-cent tax, and highly recommend that you consider not only fixing the roads in the city, but focusing on the lungs of the city, as Frederick Almstead once said, which is the Parks and Rec Department. I'm representing my generation, the normal millennial, I-gen, I call it what you want. I'm here as a local, but someone who is also tired of hearing there's nothing to do in Topeka. I'm advocating for my generation to stay in Topeka. And the quality of life that Shawnee County Parks and Rec impacts are not only young families and young parents, but also young professionals like myself, and the entire community will benefit from extending the sales tax to the entire county and commuting the approximately $3 million annually from the county portion to the Parks and Rec Committee. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person signed up to speak is Ms. Carmel.
Oh, it's okay, Carol.
Thank you very much. I'm Carol Marple, and I do own a house in the city. I think I've told you that before. And I do agree with Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Claire. It's very hard to ask somebody to pay for something that they see no benefit from. But I wanted to take an opportunity because I knew that Parks and Rec was going to be discussed here tonight, and they were a tough act to follow, but I would like to just add my comments to them. I have been spending an awful lot of time visiting parks and community centers in the city. My grandchildren have been more than willing to come along and do research with me. And I want to just share with all of you what I see. I see that we have parks that have old playground equipment, and don't get me wrong, there's nothing wrong with old playground equipment, but it could certainly be refurbished with some paint. It would be refreshed and just some general maintenance. But I also see parks that have no equipment. I see parks that don't even have picnic tables. But I think the absolute most saddest thing that I see in this, the city of Topeka and the county, is parks and swimming pools at community centers that have no people in. That is, to me, the saddest thing ever. We have no people because of the hours that they are open. Deferred maintenance and having an adequate staff is a huge problem with Parks and Rec. And you're probably saying, "Is this the city's problem?" Yes, it is. And I don't mean that in terms of money, because I do understand how this works. The responsibility of the Parks and Rec Department is the three county commissioners. They oversee it. And we also know that the county commission currently has, or the county has $34 million in carryover money. At this time, they have allocated $3 million of that $34 million to go to deferred maintenance to Parks and Rec. Is that enough money? No. No. What we need to talk about tonight is what it is to the cost of the city of not having adequately funded Parks and Rec program. We need to explore all options. The city and the county need to work together. It concerns everyone. We all, all of us here that are parents, grandparents, who are thinking about having children, you know, we all know that a busy child is tired, and they have less tendency to get into mischief. But to keep them busy, they've got to have things to do. Mr. Jaeger, everybody here, we've all spoken of quality of life, and that's how important, that's what's going to make our community grow. But we also know that people take a long and hard look at the community that they are thinking about moving to. They ask themselves, the primary question, "Is this a good place for my family?" You know, these are just some general observations that I have made. I have no power to do anything about anything. And, believe me, four minutes, I got 10 seconds.
Do we have an extension of 30 seconds or a minute for Ms., one minute for Ms. Marple? Councilwoman Claire, I mean Ortiz, Councilwoman Emerson, seconds. We proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voting. Yes, Ms. Marple, you have an extra minute.
Thank you very much. I just really wanted to sum it up that, you know, four minutes, we've got to all start having dialogue. And Parks and Rec is a basic part of the foundation of our communities, and we've got to improve it. We've got to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Before we proceed with any further comments, I will say that, first of all, I appreciate the impetus and the desire of having some park work done. If you recall, a few weeks ago, I had some time in Ripley Park, and when I spoke with the children, they did have a lot of desire, actually, most of the residents in Ripley had a desire to see their parks better. They also talked about public safety concerns that they had. And I just sent the written report to the ladies that are the council members of the area, to the city manager as well, so that we could just continue the conversation. And I also sent it to Commissioner Cook, who's the council, the commissioner for that area. In addition to that, I spoke to Commissioner Cook when I shared these concerns, and they were more than willing to work with me in trying to make sure that the requests of those citizens in Ripley Park were attended to. Those including of leveling the area for the cricket team, and to maybe repainting and putting in the budget for them to make improvements. In addition to that, I was having a conversation with Mr. Ledbetter, I believe I was in Puerto Rico when we were having that conversation, that, you were not, I was. That, yeah, thank you for that. That when he had his document that he shared, and expeditiously, I contacted immediately our friends on the other side. And the conversation was really good. Actually, one of the commissioners said that it was a very intriguing and a really good idea. However, I will remind the body of a few things. First of all, everybody, including the commissioners that I spoke with, were concerned of the fact of how fast this came about and how late it came about into the conversation. I think that it would be a little bit disingenuous, especially with us trying to espouse transparency, to all of a sudden change direction with regards to where the tax is going after we have been telling the public all along that we are going to do a tax that is going to impact the city. I think that if somebody was on the other side of the discussion, there would be a lot of discontent, and I know that Mr. Ledbetter would absolutely agree with that. In addition to that, when I spoke with the commissioners, one of the other concerns is that the vote would not be passing from the city council. And we have always been talking about this being a council vote. At this point in time, the vote would have to move to the county. So the comment that we just ingested, and it was a great conversation that we had, was, "So now you're asking the county to pass a tax." And in addition to that, we would be asking the county to pass the tax, they would have to come up with the language. We would, in two weeks, have to determine what an interlocal agreement would be. And the other very valuable comment that we received, that I received, was, "And by the way, the amount of money that is being projected will not be the amount of money that will be received because there is a mix in percentages that has to be taken into account, even though we're expecting a certain amount of money from the city and the money that's coming from the county." So I want to, first of all, tell Joe, your idea was brilliant. I wish you would have had it a month or six months ago, so that we could really have this conversation, not a month, six, so that we could really have the conversation, because the idea was brilliant, and it was an idea that really brought about collaboration. But I know that from the conversations that I was having with the county, this would take a drastic turn with regards to the conversation that we have been having, and it would really change the vote from it even being a council vote to now it being a county vote, because there would be a county tax that would have to be passed. But I wanted to make sure that everybody in the body knew that I was diligently reaching out to our friends on the side, because everybody thought the idea was pretty interesting. So with that, we now have the floor. We have had discussion with regards to whether, you know, people are going to be supporting. I don't know if we're at the point of more discussion. Yes, Councilwoman Lesser?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, at this point, I think would like to make a motion to amend the resolution, adding the following language.
Councilwoman Lesser? But before we have a resolution to amend, do we amend the resolution before we amend, before we have a motion?
I think you need to have the motion first.
The motion first. We would have to have a motion first for the approval of the tax, and a second, and then we will go into an amendment. So...
My mistake.
I'm sorry?
My mistake.
No, it's okay. Deputy Mayor?
I will give you that motion.
A motion for half-cent sales tax renewal?
As written. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilman Emerson. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have discussion? And I think that this is where Councilwoman Lesser comes in.
I just, a point of order. Maybe it's all going to come out just fine, but we had some discussion from some council members beforehand and broke to have input, but we haven't even had discussion, you know, observations or... observations or opinions from each of the council members yet. So if that's purposeful, okay, I just...
No, I don't think it was purposeful. Once you have the motion and a second, you can still continue having discussion. So as a point of protocol, there was an individual interested in making a motion, and I just provided the procedural aspect on how to go into that desired motion. So Councilman Lesser.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution by adding the following language to, in line 32, immediately following the actual ballot language. I would like to add, for the purpose of this resolution, maintenance shall not include snow removal unless specifically authorized by the governing body. Thank you.
We have a motion to make an amendment to the language to remove snow removal as part of the maintenance. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Emerson. Do we have discussion on this amendment? Again, the amendment is the removal of the language of snow. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Madam Mayor, I don't think that's correct. I think he, if we could have them read that back, what it was, it wasn't the removal.
Snow is the exclusion.
Can we have it read back, please?
For the purpose of this resolution, maintenance shall not include snow removal unless specifically authorized by the governing body.
I gotta add snow removal expenses.
Thank you. Let me remind staff, we need to always get, in our governing body rules, to adhere to the chair. So does that mean that it's excluding it? Because that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that he's saying that we have to approve it. Is that correct?
It's, the motion, if I'm reading it correctly and understanding it, is that we will not include it, but in a certain situation that is like vital that we use that funding, that it would have to come to the governing body, so that the governing body would either make the approval or deny of that special request.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if we could clarify just and say, include snow removal expenses, just to make sure we're talking about...
The expenses, correct. Is that amenable? Okay. So Deputy Mayor.
So two questions on that. So what is snow removal? Is that the pre-treatment liquid that we put down to try and prevent icing on the bridge? The icing fluid, is it salt? Is it the machines that actually move the snow? Is it hauling off the snow? I'm a little nervous about what all that is. My other question is, we already do this. In the budget, when we look at the street maintenance budget, we're told what funds feed these various activities. So if the desire is to not have sales tax money routinely used for snow removal, and I do want, I support what you're trying to get after, you know, the idea is that this is intended to go to fixing streets and not necessarily, you know, removing snow and that sort of thing, so I totally understand that, but if that's our desire, can't we do that already through the budget process as it sits now?
City manager and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
That would be accurate, but I think, based on what I'm hearing from Councilman Lesser, is that he's wanting to make very clear direction, mainly, I think, to the voters relative to this issue. That is already part of the ability of the governing body from year to year as we do annual budgets. But I think the purpose, based on the discussions that we've heard, is simply to make it clear that, as people would be voting on this, that they would understand that it wouldn't include that.
If I can follow, and I'm totally fine with that, so we need to define snow removal, or snow removal expenses. You know, what exactly is that? Because, I mean, I just listed off six things, some of them have to do with snow, some have to do with ice. What exactly in detail are we discussing here then?
And I think from previous discussions that were had, from the legal decision that was made relative to the allowance of the use of those funds, we have a good definition relative to that.
Well, but the public doesn't know that.
Well...
If this is for the public, then the public needs to know that.
Right, I mean, as part of it, as we're making public information announcements relative to what the ballot is about, we would need to include that in order to, for them to understand what type of removal expenses we're referencing.
So I would then request that that be part of the ballot language. If we're going to list out what we're not going to do, then I think we should list out what we're not going to do.
Well, I think part of the decision relative to not including it in the ballot is to not tie a governing body's hands for 10 years relative to the use of snow removal.
Well, no, no, I like the exclusion for that, but I'm just saying, if we're going to define what snow removal is, I think we should list that in the ballot language, just so people know what the...
The ballot language or the resolution?
Well, isn't that what we're admitting as the ballot language of the resolution?
The ballot language is after the question mark, the ballot language ends. His comments that were made for amendments comes after the ballot language, and it would not be part of the ballot language.
Oh, I just had a, I thought you were specifically referring to ballot language then. Ah, okay, all right.
Councilwoman...
I find out of this now, as long as we're going to make sure folks understand what we're doing.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz to be followed by Councilwoman Heller.
I kind of think that maintenance is a part of that. And I think it is, as a governing body, I think we could come together at any time and vote to give that direction to the city manager, whoever the city manager is. I just don't want it to be so complicated that people are going to get confused and just say, forget it altogether. And that's why I specifically asked on maintenance, is potholes a part of maintenance? Because we had a city manager that said it wasn't. And we had governing bodies that wouldn't, they wouldn't override him and say that it is. I mean, you know, so we have to be very careful not to, because right now, the voters are kind of, they're kind of questionable on what's going on. I had one voter say, with Joe's proposal, they said, are we going to have a 14-point, whatever, percent increase? And I said, oh, no, no, you know, I mean, because they're listening and they're hearing all this, and the paper's not, no pun intended, that's up to you. Paper's not making it perfectly clear sometimes, you know, so, not you, Tim, I know that's not yours, but I'm just saying, we have to be mindful of that.
Councilwoman Heller.
I will take a moment. I just, I appreciate the work that the city manager, particularly the two of you that did, led up the public hearing, others that have done polling and input and so on have done so far. Somehow, it's good to have a conversation just around the table for us at this point. Based on what I've heard, just to kind of pull this all in, in terms of where the money would go, using the same language that we had before, my understanding is that what our Public Works Department had told us, gave us the numbers, was that we really needed three-quarters just to do what we had voted on before, to finish it. So maintenance and improvement of existing streets, curb and gutters, blah, 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 blah. So, and at this point, people were, there were, they got a margin on the polls to go three-quarter, but there was a lot of concern that we're still getting it right, still nailing it down, would push us over 10 percent, all that kind of stuff. We should, we should hold tight, keep getting the system down, see how far we can get with it. But, and one of the concerns about going to three-quarters was this idea that we would open it up, because what we talked about here was, if we open it up to anything besides that really narrow use, three-quarters isn't even enough money. And so at least everybody can go around town and know what's going to get fixed and what that money's going to get spent for by the kind of language that the city manager has brought back to us in the clarification on the snow removal. And people really wanted us to be tight with that money. And it makes it challenging. Maybe we can get ahead on it a little bit at this level. So I appreciate this and can support it and have gotten good feedback about it. I do know that along the way, an idea of something sort of in between going three-quarters now and staying at half now, was the idea that perhaps we just keep it solid, keep it tight, do the half percent, half cent now, but consider that in sometime in two to five years, separate that quarter cent by considering something later. And if we did that on our own or with this new idea to engage with the county as well, we could do something that was strictly more, exactly more of what we're doing now, or open it up a little bit to some actual growth and enhancement, if you want to call it, as opposed to the maintenance, of various streets. It's been a challenge to limit this money, but I think it's served us well in terms of getting as many miles done as we have. And I think there's been a sense to not stop that. But I personally am really open to that third section idea of looking on our own at a separate quarter cent even as soon as two years. Gives us a chance to look at that for the streets only, or to do some things we've talked about, I have, I know, but of some other public works kinds of things that we've been bonding before that we could do with cash, that simply makes more money available for everything, both in short term and long term. So I just wanted to mention that, particularly with this new idea as well, because I'm open to that. I think it was very wild to manage well with the way it was and have had a good sense of support from the public. I put it out for comment on my Facebook page, and really, people were kind of all over the place, but not really many comments. So I think people are comfortable with what we're doing, where we're going. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I wanted to maybe call the question, because we had a Councilman Lesser for nine, is I guess you're being called now. You're 10 in my book, anyway, but... He had the amendment and a second, so I guess, at this point, before we consider, I guess, other things, and I, by the way, I agree with a lot of your comments, but do we need to vote on the motion at hand right now?
So we have somebody calling the question, and I was educated on the fact that if one councilperson opposes to starting to make the vote for the question, that we continue discussion. So I will look at everybody for consensus to see if you guys are ready to vote only on the portion of Mr. Lesser. It does not affect the half-cent vote at this point in time. It is simply voting for the motion on the floor, which is a motion for amendment to exclude the snow removal from part of the funding unless it comes specifically to the council for approval. It seems like there is no objection to the call, the question, so we will vote only on excluding snow removal unless the body votes for it from the ballot, from the resolution.
We have nine, yes, Mr. Ortiz voting no.
Nine having voting yes. The language of the resolution will now state that snow removal will not occur unless it explicitly comes in front of the body. Now we proceed with the discussion of the half-cent sales tax and the three-quarter sales that Ms. Heller was talking, and Councilwoman Ortiz has the floor.
At least my no button works. I would like to make a motion. I understand why they put the word existing in, and it's so that we wouldn't have anybody out there making, you know, building a new street, and I think that was the gist of it. But they left, they left us out with existing dirt roads, and what I'd like to do is take the word, I might need Leo to help me, take the word existing out, slash through it, and then put somewhere in there that no new streets or something to that effect.
So Councilwoman Ortiz, if I may, so what you're trying to accomplish is that no new streets will be built, however, any structure considered a road to be included, to be improved?
That this money, that we can't use it for new streets, but take the word existing out, so what we pay for, we'll get. Are you seeing what I'm trying to do, Lisa?
City manager.
City attorney is concerned about trying to do this in a quick fashion. If we are interested in trying to consider such an amendment, it would be best to have a recess in order for her to craft some appropriate language in a much more detailed way rather than doing it on the fly.
Absolutely. We are like 15 minutes away from that typical recess that we take. Councilwoman Heller.
I don't think a recess is enough. I know, I, that very issue got debated for months before the last one was passed. And if we were going to ask the city attorney to research that and come up with different language especially, I think we need to give her more time to kind of look back at those discussions before and think it through. That's a big request.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Lisa, what do you think you need? Can you come up with something, and are you wanting some more time?
I guess Councilmember Claire, I'm kind of along the same lines of what Councilmember Heller is saying. I hate to go in and just start crossing out existing and put in no new streets when there was a lot of background discussion with public works staff and everyone about what this was supposed to mean. So that's why I kind of wanted to recess, just to maybe talk a little bit with Jason and see what this might do, because I...
Can we recess and then see how far she...
Councilman, yes. Let's listen to the other council members, and we'll see what the consensus is with regards to the recess.
But my suggestion is that we recess, see how far she thinks she needs more time, and then go with Heller.
Okay. Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, just for clarification, I'm not 100% sure I understand why, as it's written, the scenario which Councilwoman Ortiz mentioned, why, I mean, it sounds like those are existing streets. Why are they not going to be addressed with this current resolution in its form that it is now?
Councilwoman Ortiz.
The definition of existing is what's there. If I don't have a sidewalk, so when they come through, they're only going to put my street in, okay? I don't have a double-wide street, I just have a single street. That's all they're going to put. They're not going to, they're not going to put in a two-lane or a three-lane or whatever. That's why they put in existing. So I can't get curbs, I can't get gutters, I can't get...
Concrete.
Concrete, I can't get any of that. That cuts me out, but you want my money. You still want me to pay another four years for something that I'm not, I'm not going to get. And I know, if I may, I know the whole, the whole issue in 2009 was, because there was a business owner that wanted a street from this part to this part, and they didn't want him to get it with this half-cent sales tax money. And I know that was a lot of it, but you cut everybody out on District, I mean, you cut a lot of us out, District 2, 3, 4, some of 5. So we're asking people to pay for something that they're not going to get. That's, that's why I'm asking what I'm asking. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City manager, is this something that maybe public works staff would know the answer to? To my experience is, when I've worked on street projects, is they take existing as we can't increase, for instance, if a two-lane street, we can't make it three-lane. In instances where they do that, there's other funding they get maybe to add the third lane or the sidewalk or something, but is this something maybe, I know Dr. Peak hasn't had enough time up here tonight yet, so, is that something he could address, or?
Right. He can go through what they use as the, I guess, the method that they use in order to be able to determine, and it's come into play on a number of streets and even discussions when we've gone into projects, so.
Thank you.
Sure, sir. I mean, that term existing is, I mean, we're looking at what's there, the width of the street, and that's, that's what we're going back. You saw that on the Capitol CIP tour, when we toured some of the neighborhoods in east Topeka, where we talked about adding curb and gutter or storm sewer. If it's an existing ditch section street and we're using half-cent money and only half-cent money, we're putting back what is there. We have on projects used half-cent to take care of existing pavement or existing sidewalk, and then used geo bond or federal funds to add, you know, extend the sidewalk network, add other pieces, and that kind of comes back to you through the CIP process. But just to kind of reiterate, this primary drivers for... But just to kind of reiterate, this primary drivers for achieving that PCI goal, and so it's that trade-off. I mean, I hear Councilwoman Ortiz and that desire of other constituents to add and enhance, and that's, that's the struggle we have, is how do we balance that and help satisfy your goals of improving the overall condition of the streets? And that's why I think, you know, when we came back with the half-cent, going back to that existing language has kind of kept those guardrails up to keep us making progress on that, and that's why we had that in our initial recommendation. But of course, we will do whatever the desire of the body is, with respect to this.
And if I may ask you, Dr. Pika, follow-up on that. You gave us, I think, some figures on, do you remember what it would take if we wanted to try to address a lot of the storm sewers and curb and gutter and places?
Yes, we did a very high-level estimate, and that was roughly $70 to $90 million over 10 years to add curb and gutter or storm sewer to a lot of the existing streets. And that cost didn't include right away our utility partners, if waterline sewer, those types of things have to be relocated. It's just a very high-level estimate, and it's just a starting point, so.
Yeah, and my experience is, is when you start adding storm sewers, when you run into, oh, the gas lines in there, that has to be moved, and then the gas, the water lines in the way on the other side, and that ends up being a driver of schedule slippage on a lot of these projects, and adds a lot of complexity. Because I'm like, like Councilwoman Ortiz, I do have a number, I mean, the house I grew up in has an open ditch in front of it. It's tough, because we love, you know, everything to have curb and gutter and storm sewers. God, I just don't know how we pay for it, so. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, who's next?
Thank you. So my fear is along the lines of yours here. I actually agree that it would be nice to have streets and storm sewers and that sort of thing, and sidewalks over there. And it's not that I'm not opposed to changing the ballot language to try and take a stab at that, but we've committed to accomplish a certain amount of projects for folks in the next 10 years with this money. If we augment what we're going to use the money for, all of the estimates and everything we've done thus far is useless. None of those schedules that we have published, that we have said we're going to try and meet, are any good, because we'll have to go back and rework every single one of those to see which streets now need to be enlarged, which are going to get sidewalks and that sort of thing. We're going to accomplish far, far less than what we're going to do now, because this money won't go as far. Now, I granted it will, it will do more in certain areas where there aren't streets and sidewalks and that sort of thing, but, you know, it's the question of what folks want. Do they want to do complete projects, but just a few of them? Or do they want to touch as much as we can in the city with the money that we have? Either option is fine for me, but, you know, we're, we're going to take a 20-year plan and make it 30, 40 years by doing that. And if that's what folks want, that's fine, but yeah, I mean, I see you nodding your head over there, that you're disagreeing with me, but money isn't free. And we're going to pour a ton of money into doing these other projects, and it's not going to come from this tax, because there isn't that much money there. So, you know, with respect, we're going to take the existing schedule we have and draw it out much, much longer. And again, if that's what folks want, I'm fine with that. You know, that was part of the discussion behind having the three-quarter cent versus the half-cent. How long do you guys want it to take to get out of this hole we're in, this infrastructure crisis? And yeah, if we try to do more with this money, it's going to take longer. That's the, the simple reality. There's no way around that. And if that's what people want, that's fine, but people need to know that by changing this, we're going to extend schedules. Thank you.
Lisa, do you have any language in that period of time that we've been talking, or would you prefer to have a few-minute recess so that you could present back to the councilwoman?
Let me.
Few minutes?
Yeah, that would be great, actually. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Who was the second, to Ms. Ortiz's amendment? Did we have a second?
We don't have the language yet.
We didn't have the language to go into the motion, so, so at this point in time, right on time, 7:54, we are going to recess for a period of five minutes. Lisa, would that be adequate, 10 minutes?
10.
For a period of 10 minutes, so we will return back to the meeting at 8:04. So the meeting is in recess.